While we're being met, we'll now call the meeting to order, please. Two things to note in the beginning. Any visitors to the hall, not town meeting members, need to be over here in the visitors' section. Second thing, the Halifax Light Fireworks is having their usual refreshment sale on the parroters, so anytime, please help yourself. I will call now on the clerk, Mrs. Gainer, to open the warrant, please.
To either of the constables of the town of Halifax and the county of Plymouth, greeting. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Halifax Elementary School in said Halifax on Monday, the 4th day of January next, at 7:30 o'clock in the afternoon, then and there to act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up into tested copies thereof at the town hall, Halifax Post Office, and three other public places in said town, fourteen days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereof fail not, and may do return of this warrant with your due insur on to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting, affir said. Given under our hand for 17th day of December, in the year of our Lord 2015, Troy Garron, Thomas Milius, true copy and test, Thomas Hammond, Constable.
Thank you. If you would all rise and please remove your hats and say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance. And point of, just for information purposes, tonight's warrant has three articles. The first article has to do with Pope's Tavern. Articles number two and number three both have to do with the ambulance service, and under our bylaw, we do everything by lottery now, so they're not ordered ahead of time other than on the paper here. In the bylaw, it allows the moderator and his discretion that if one article was contingent on another, he can have those come out of order. In my view, Article two and Article three are contingent on each other, and it doesn't make any sense to do Article three before Article two. So those of you keeping score, if Article three comes up or Article two, we do Article two. Okay? So we need to get the first one. The first article in the lottery is Article number one, which is proposed by the Municipal and School Building Committee. I think Mr. Gainer.
I'm going to go with you.
Mr. Gainer.
First thing, on 17th minute, we're in Halifax. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $70,000 from line 78 to Silver Lake Assessment of Article Four of the annual town meeting of May 11th, 2015, to the Municipal and School Building Committee to contract with an architectural firm to develop architectural plans and construction documents for the renovation and expansion of Pope's Taverns, and assist the committee in obtaining bids for the construction of said renovation and expansion. Said funds to be used for these activities and any other tasks necessary to complete said work.
Thank you. We have a second. We have a motion and a second on Article One. Mr. Gainer, it's your article. Would you like to start?
Thank you. I think to start out, first of all, I hope everybody's got a handout that was provided at the front desk on your way in. It kind of self-explains what the article itself is proposing to do. After many meetings and some feedback from the town on articles in the past, we, as a committee, decided to...
Talk into it for a second. I'm seeing somebody can't hear you.
Yeah, I'm not sure the mic's on.
Get closer, or is it on? Oh, it's not on. Push the button.
How's that? We've come to the conclusion that it's best to utilize Pope's Tavern, because it's currently being used by the Council on Aging, and proposing in addition to basically add to the first and second floors, as well as utilizing the basement down on the very first ground floor. I think if you open the presentation booklet, first of all, there's a picture on the front where it shows we're basically squaring off the building and coming close to doubling the size of the first floor space. You can see the addition to the improve on page two, addition to improve the current Pope's Tavern. We're basically adding 860 square foot large utility room on the first floor. There's a second grade room on the second floor of 1,130 square feet, which will be utilized for programs. Going right down the list, it's 3,300 square feet, original building size on the first and second floor, and the new addition will be adding 3,215 square feet. We were allowed enlarging the kitchen area to better utilize the facilities as far as creating meals, meals on wheels, the lunch program. We're adding an elevator to access all three floors. Basically, the next three or four mentions there of how we're going to upgrade and basically bring the Pope's Tavern into compliance with current laws and standards. They were adding two handicap bathrooms on the first floor and a handicap bathroom on the second floor. This will also provide a second means of access on the second floor where there is no emergency access now. We're upgrading the electrical, which from what I understand, the last time that was done was rehabbed in 1985, so we're bringing that all up to standard, as well as upgrade the windows in the old section, which are horrible. We're putting on a brand-new roof, too. You can see the conceptual design on the front. We're adding a sprinkle system that currently does not exist inside the building now. There will be providing private medical rooms, which currently at Pope's Tavern, the Council on Aging has to basically move somebody out of an office in order to give anybody some small amount of privacy when a doctor or somebody else comes over. Pope's Tavern, as was discussed on our last presentation, Pope's Tavern will remain open and occupied. There will be no loss of revenue to affect anything on the tax base. That was a big concern that was expressed the last time, how we would have to basically maintain and upkeep an empty facility that wasn't being used if we had moved it elsewhere. And lastly, too, we'll be providing large rooms available to other groups in town. Right now, after speaking with the chief of police, the emergency operations room on the second floor of the police station is currently being used by not only the Council on Aging, but it's also being used by the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Youth and Rec, the Triad, and several others. And we're going to be encompassing all the use into those two major rooms by, again, utilizing what's currently in the town, existing there presently. So on the back, on the very final page, although we have discussed it in presentations before, you can see the large, large list of different quality things that we've provided for the town from the Council on Aging, to include not just the seniors, but as well as other assistance to the local community. So unless there's any other questions, that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Mr. Milius?
It's not cloudy.
Can you hear me? The Board of Selectmen recommends, and I would like to take this opportunity to speak to the article. As I'm sure everybody here knows, we have struggled with the senior center for a lot of years. We've come up with a lot of different plans, and for various reasons, the town has voted them down. And to be perfectly honest and frank with you, I haven't been particularly supportive of the more expensive ones. This plan, I believe, is the best plan that this town has come up with, and kudos to the Building Committee for having worked through this. We were able to utilize some of the plans from the original Pope's Tavern design, so we saved some money not having to reinvent the wheel. This does a tremendous amount of things for us and the senior center. It gives us the room we need, it gives us the upgrades we need, in particular, the electrical upgrades. We're going to have more access for storage in the basement, because we're going to have a new basement area. The first floor is going to be expanded, new handicap accessible restrooms, an elevator, so we can finally use the second floor, which has really eluded us for a long time. This all needed to be done regardless of whether we expanded the building or not. This plan is the best we're going to be able to come up with. We're not going to abandon the building, we're not going to have to heat or cool a building or maintain it. We're not going to take a building out of the tax base. That was one of my issues with All Seasons a few years ago. In a town that struggles for commercial base, I had a problem taking a building out of the commercial base. This gives us a building that we can utilize for a good, long time. It's going to be perfect for the seniors, I believe. And again, alluding to what Mr. Gainer said, it isn't just senior services that are provided at Pope's Tavern. There are all kinds of services to needy families, people who just need help filling out forms to get their Medicare or benefits for drugs, the good kind. Oh, wait a minute, that could go either way. The cost, this $70,000, is the price we have to pay to get decent plans. We have to have plans that you can submit. They're architectural submittal plans. We can't get quotes without the quality plans. It seems like a lot of money, but that's what we have to pay to get it done. The entire project, and I'm going to let Mr. Campbell, I believe is going to come up and talk to this later, talk to you about the cost of the building and the philosophy around how the building was planned. I am personally in favor of it. I know the rest of the board is personally in favor of it. I would really hope that you would support this article. And at this time...
Set it right.
Yeah. I would like to ask the moderator to...
I'd say, yes. We're fortunate tonight to have not only our local representative, Mr. Coulter, in attendance tonight, we also have our newly-elected senator in the general court. Senator Brady is not a member of the town meeting, he therefore can only speak with the consent of the town meeting. I'm going to ask you now if there is an objection. If there's no objection, we'll allow him to speak. If there is an objection, we'll have to take it up by motion. Do I hear an objection? Hearing no objection. Senator Brady, would you please take the microphone to the front? Inspechant that you face the moderator if you would, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I apologize to the residents to have my back you. If I may turn sideways a little, Mr. Moderator, just to...
Don't break all the windows off.
All right. I'll be on an angle. But I just, for those who don't know me, I am your newly-elected state senator, Mike Brady, due to a loss of a great friend and great supporter of the town of Halifax, Tom Kennedy, who passed away back in June. So we just had a special election, I was fortunate to get elected, and I'm going to continue to work with your local officials and your state representative, Tom Coulter. We've already been meeting about the Twin Lakes and all the issues with that. I'm going to continue to do whatever. Can you have some great elected officials here? And you're in good hands here, as well as the state representative, Tom Coulter. But this issue, I feel, is very serious. Other communities have had Council on Aging facilities that were built through different means, and they have brand-new facilities like Hanover and Rockland. Brockton, we were able to get a Council on Aging facility built with state lottery money. Now, there's no guarantees, as we know in life, other than death and taxes, as the old cliche goes. But I'm going to do whatever I can and advocate on your behalf at the state level, working with your local officials. And just to let you know, I have a soft spot in my heart for the elderly as well as the veterans. My father passed away back in '01. He was a '01, '02 veteran. And I've had older relatives in the whole district who have passed on. We recently, in November, passed a veterans' legislation as a House member, because I was a member of the House of Representatives for seven and a half years, and then when I got elected to the Senate, we passed a legislation to support our veterans. But it feels very strongly as well to support our elderly. So whatever you decide to do, it's your choice on this matter, but whatever help I can be at the state level, I'm going to advocate on your behalf. And again, mentioned in the papers today, the Speaker of the House has talked about another tough budget year, but you never know, there's a will, there's a way, and nothing is guaranteed, but I'm going to work with your officials to do whatever I can. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Brady. Did you mention that Mr. Campbell was going to make a presentation? No?
I didn't speak for him, but that's what I thought.
Okay. Mr. Campbell. Mr. Campbell's the chairman of the Building Committee.
Mr. Moderator, this time, let me go back and, Mr. Brady, Mr. Campbell, our last senator, got us this $50,000 grant that goes with this money to get this whole project started. So that was a big help from the state, and hopefully they'll come through during the construction stage. Over the past projects, when we hired an architect, you don't rein them in and they all go crazy. This time, we picked a figure that we think we can do the building, about $750,000. So what we're going to do is we're going to work up with the architect, get all of these renovations done, and hopefully come to that figure and get the project done. So we're doing it a little reversed than what we ordinarily do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Roy.
As Mr. Campbell spoke to, is that right now, the estimated cost is around $750,000. I know that our town accountant worked on some figures today. What does that mean to you when we are ready to come to you to fund the whole project? So I will ask Mrs. Nellin, the town accountant, to explain to the taxpayers what that means to your tax bill.
Okay, so if we... My figures are based on $800,000, an $800,000 bond. And if we bonded the loan for over 20 years, the first year would mean 24, 27 on the medium tax bill, so that's the average homeowner. If we bonded for 10 years, it would be $38.55 on the average tax bill. Now, this year for fiscal '17, we have the police station debt coming off the books. And last year's, the year we're in now, that was approximately $50.14 on the average tax bill. Also, our school department did a great job in refinancing the middle school and high school debt, which is going to save us approximately $20,000 a year, which is another $7.14 off the tax bill. So FY '17 will be saving $57.59 on the average tax bill. That's it.
Okay. Any further debate on the Article One as presented? It's a transfer of $70,000. Not seeing any debate. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. The next selection was Article number three. Again, the moderator's discretion here says Article two needs to be addressed first, so we will move then to Article two, which I believe is presented by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article as printed.
Okay. We move Article two as printed, and we have a second. Mrs. Roy, here are our articles. You want Chief Piveros?
We would like Chief Piveros to first do the presentation.
Jason Piveros, Fire Chief. Back in September, we convened the Fire Study Committee to look at a couple different issues. We were looking at how we were able to handle our first and second medical calls, what we would need to do to expand the fire department, different ways to pay for it. So as part of that, we looked at ambulance fees, and we took a survey, we looked at the ambulance fees of, I believe, 15 different communities, seven being the communities that Halifax uses as a direct comparison to. And what we found was that our ambulance rates were dramatically lower than most towns were charging for ambulance services. That chart's on the back of the page that we left on the table. We also looked at what it actually cost us to do a call. And we noted, just to do our first ambulance call, and that's staffing the station with two people, and the money it costs to replace ambulances, and cardiac monitors, and the equipment we need in the ambulance, that it's over $1,200, $1,200 to $1,300 just to handle that first call. The second thing that came to light was when we cannot handle our first call, which is probably around 60 to 80 times a year, we rely heavily on our mutual aid. Mutual aid ambulances come from Hanson or Plumpton or some of these other towns, and what happens is when a Plumpton ambulance comes to Halifax, the Halifax resident pays the Plumpton rate, and as you can see on the back, it's dramatically, dramatically higher. What we did is we took the... I also contacted a company called Comstar, which is the largest ambulance billing company in the state of Massachusetts. We do our own billing in Halifax, very successful with it, but we wanted to see how other communities compared. And what they presented us with was what they call their top 50 producers, and they do mostly municipal ambulance billing, not for privates. What we proposed is to switch to what their top 50 producers are. We felt that that would help us to cover the cost of us doing ambulance calls. When we took the figures that we're proposing to change to, and we applied them to the 2014 call volume, there would be an increase of about $400,000 in revenue to the town, or that the town had actually missed out on in 2014. That was one of the reasons why we thought it was important to bring it to a special town meeting, because it's a substantial amount of money that we did not recoup in This article is to authorize the Board of Selectmen to make changes to the ambulance rates. After speaking with most of my colleagues, it's very uncommon to have town meetings set those rates. In most communities, the Board of Selectmen set the ambulance rates based on recommendations by the Fire Chief. A good example as to why we're recommending that is because now we've gone since the last time the rates were changed is in 2010, before that was in 2007. And both times, we were substantially different than our other communities. So by authorizing the Board of Selectmen to make those changes, we would review them on an annual basis, and the Selectmen would be authorized to make the changes to the ambulance rate.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Article two merely allows the Board of Selectmen now to make all of the decisions relating to the ambulance fees. Up until now, it's always been done by town meeting, just so everyone understands what we're dealing with. Assuming Article two does not pass, then we could take up Article three, which does set a new set of rates. So a hand right there?
Allison Long, Monmouth Street. I have tremendous respect and have used the ambulances here, so this is nothing negative, but it is something that I don't understand, and I would really appreciate it if you could find the answers for me. And that is, why, if we're paying people as they're our employees, and they're being paid for a job, which includes the ambulance, and if we are providing ambulances in the town, these amounts seem humongous to me. I understand that for most of us, especially since most of us have Medicare at this point, it's going to be paid for by insurance, but maybe there are some people who aren't being able to pay for it with insurance, and, you know, they could have one ride and it's like $2,000 or $3,000. I mean, it's just, it's kind of mind-boggling to me, and I'd just like an explanation.
I understand the question, and perhaps Mrs. Roy or Chief Piveros can answer it. In relation to this article, this would allow the Board of Selectmen to set rates. Chief Piveros, or I suppose you can tell us what procedure that they would follow in order to do that, in order to maybe answer our question?
So if I... Can you just repeat the question one more time? I'm sorry.
She wants to know how come the rates are so high anyway, basically.
Right. Well, the rates are high because of what it costs to actually do an ambulance call. The average ambulance cost now is up to around $280,000. We're on a 10-year replacement cycle. The cost of a cardiac monitor costs $30,000. We spend over $20,000 per year on ambulance supplies. The people who are on the department require training, which is a big portion of our training budget goes to EMS. It's basically to help the town offset those expenses and potentially use that money to increase the level of service. One of the questions when I presented to the Board of Selectmen was, if we change the ambulance rates, will we be able to change the level of... Will that increase the level of service? The answer is potentially yes. If we have a proposal that we're going to bring in May to use a portion of that increase to better staff the fire department, and at that time, I'll address why we have those concerns, and be a little more detailed into that. But right now, it's basically to... So the town is able to maximize the amount they can bring in through the insurance companies. And we know that other towns are billing that amount. We know that we're not charging enough to cover the expenses, not even near enough to cover the expenses. And one of the things that I didn't hit upon when I initially presented that is what it will do to the average resident. And for the most part, it will have very little effect. People who are on Medicare, Medicare will only pay us a certain amount. So if we charge $1,900 for an ambulance call, and Medicare is only going to pay us $600, that's all we're going to get. So we know that. And that comes from about 52% of our population. Another 9% of the population is state insurance, Medicaid, that type of thing, and they fall under the same category. Commercial insurers and automobile insurers do pay higher rates. The rates we're proposing are nowhere near as high as private ambulance services. And for the average person that has commercial insurance, they have a copay and deductible already. So if we charge $1,900, their copay is still going to be, depending on their plan, $100, whether we charge $1,900 or we charge $500. So it should have virtually no impact on the person paying the bill. The other thing I forgot to... I didn't mention previously was abatements in our policy. So we don't want to set ambulance rates so that people do not call the ambulance. We encourage... We want to encourage everyone who needs an ambulance to call it and not be in fear of doing so. The Selectmen supported a policy in which we will send out three bills. We'll bill the insurance companies in primary and secondary insurance directly. We'll send three statements to the patient, and after the third statement, virtually nothing else will happen. We will not go to collections, it doesn't get reported to the credit agencies. And that bill will stay on the books for three years, and after three years, the Selectmen will vote to abate unpaid ambulance bills. I hope that answered part of the question.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, debate in the back first, and then over here on the corner. Chief, you may as well stay right in front of that.
How you doing? Jason Conroy, 21 Jordan Road. Couple of quick questions. The chief said he was going to bring some stuff up in May... The chief said he was going to bring some stuff up in May at the next town meeting about, because I've seen a lot of stuff on Halifax locals about the town not being sufficiently staffed, and he had mentioned this will bring in approximately $400,000. How much of that money will go towards the new staffing that he may be looking for, and how much towards the general fund? My first question. And the second question would be this is, if we pass Article three, which basically gives them the increase in fees they're looking for, and decline Article two, does that mean they still get the money, but we still get a chance to vote? I just don't want to take anything away from the people that come to town meeting, because that basically gives the Selectmen the choice and takes it away from the town meeting people.
So what we're, we're, you can have a seat, I'll get you an answer to the second, the first question. The second question is Article two specifically says that the town, the Board of Selectmen shall have the authority to establish and make changes to the list of charges for ambulance services. So as things stand, if Article two were to pass, you have your charges as they currently are, the Board of Selectmen then has the right to make changes to that. They don't have that right now, that's handled entirely through town meeting votes, whenever they're brought up. In terms of the first question relating to future costs and so on, I'll leave it to Chief Viveros without getting too involved in an article that's not before us, but just what his thoughts are for the future.
Right, so like I said, we, the main reason what prompted me to look at ambulance rates, which is honestly something I just need to look at yearly anyway, was to figure out how other departments were staffing their fire department, and make sure we were realizing every potential avenue, and the ambulance rates was the biggest one. The second part of the issue that the staffing, sorry, the fire study committee looked at was, do we need additional staffing? And without getting into the full presentation on that, that they, we came up with a pretty comprehensive proposal, unorthodox proposal, that maximized our, could maximize our service for the lowest amount of money. I guess, I have a big presentation at the next town meeting, but I...
It's got many attractions.
Yeah. We haven't totally finalized our budget, but it will be somewhere in the neighborhood of a $235,000 increase to the fire department budget. And that would make significant improvements to the staffing of the fire department, without getting into the specifics tonight. That would leave, just by, if we, if our estimates are correct, somewhere in the neighborhood of another $170,000 that could be used for, if the town supported that, any purpose that town meeting wanted.
So the money can be split. Just to be clear, Article two, maybe Mrs. Roy would like to speak to this, again, gives the flexibility to the Board of Selectmen. I don't know that it's been emphasized why that's important, and maybe you could answer that.
So I am also a member of the fire study committee, and what the chief has explained is, we have looked at the potential of revenue, and by setting the rates at this time, we will have a good five months to sort of back up what we believe is going to happen as far as revenues. And then when we come back to you at town meeting, we'll be more confident that we will be able to fund what we feel is a good program for our residents and to ensure that an ambulance gets to your house in a timely manner. I know those three extra minutes really do make a difference when you're waiting for an ambulance. It seems much, much longer, and so we recognize that, and we want to provide the best service that we can for you. The idea of having the Board of Selectmen actually set the rates is that we don't go this long without setting a rate. We have created a policy so that it's an automatic increase based on if Medicare rates or other rates are going up, so that we don't wait this long and lose potential revenue. And I do understand and respect the wishes of people wanting to maintain their right to vote. I absolutely understand that in most instances. But in this particular area, we will have more flexibility. And again, a policy is in place that we're not just rolling dice, coming up with a rate, it's tied to the industry.
One fellow up, and then I have another question.
So at the next town meeting, when the fire department comes up, will, because I know every time I see 5,000 for pages, I see 10,000 for uniforms, I see all the different things that come up, is this still, will this fund that, or will that be included in this extra $170,000 of revenue that should be left over after additional staffing?
Mrs. Roy?
Okay, so the things that you mentioned, Mr. Conroy, are things that are capital. And typically, capital items are purchased with free cash or one-time revenues. So eventually, yes, they would be funded, because whatever funds that we don't use in the operating budget becomes the capital money the following year that we use. So it's indirect, but it's not, you know, you're not going to see, you're not not going to see those articles separately.
I had a question in the back. Yes, sir. You have to come up here.
Mine?
No, you have to come up into the front, please. Just identify yourself and then ask your question, please.
Hi, I'm Bob Baker, 24 Holmes Street.
Thank you.
Nice to see a full house.
And not waiting.
I had a question, and I guess it was already asked. The fire chief, Lushard, you mentioned $400,000, and you're already planning on spending it?
Mr. Baker, Mr. Baker, address your, Mr. Baker, address your questions to me, please, and I'll get you an answer. So your question is?
He mentioned approximately $400,000. Yet now you're talking about spending it already. It hasn't been approved.
It hasn't been approved, that's correct. Yeah, they're talking about...
I think we need to make that point.
Okay. Well, they haven't increased the rates either, that's why it hasn't been approved.
So why are we talking about that?
The question on Article two is whether or not the town meeting will agree that the Board of Selectmen has the authority to set the rates. Currently, that's done by town meeting, and that's what we're going to vote on now. And then whether they increase the rates or decrease the rates, they'll make that decision, and of course, it'll all come back to the town one way or another, but they will make that decision. Okay? That's a good question. All right, thank you. Any other debate on Article two? Seeing no other questions or debate on Article two, all those in favor of Article two as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes by majority. Article three.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over Article three.
I second.
Mrs. Roy, your reason for passing over is?
Article two passed, so there's no need to vote on the rates.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
Okay. Any debate on whether or not to pass over Article three? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of passing over Article three, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mrs. Roy, need a motion to dissolve this town meeting?
To dissolve the town meeting.
Thank you. And we have a second. We have a motion and a second to dissolve this special town meeting. Finance Committee's recommendation is?
Finance Committee recommends.
Committee recommends. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Unanimously. Thank you all.